And I'm gonna run through our agenda. So first is set adjust agenda. We don't have much on here. We're just going through.
I have something to throw out for that.
Go ahead.
I wondered if we couldn't just chat about the possibility of posting, maybe on Front Porch Forum on the town website or whatever, all of the appointments that we appoint in our organizational meeting as a select board after town meeting. But if we make a plan to put those up and put a small description of what that appointment does for the town and whether or not there's any small compensation, that sort of thing. And maybe we'll have some people interested in serving in that way.
Great. So do you want to add that as an item or was that the gist right there?
Well, there's no comments from the, yeah, so maybe we could add it as an item, just so we could talk about how we might approach posting the information or who might do that.
Okay, so we'll do that and we'll do that at the end.
Sure.
Okay. Can you remind me if I forget?
Oh, yes, I will.
Okay. So that's one adjustment to add an item at the end to discuss how we're better ways to get the word out about appointments after town meeting. Any other adjustments to the agenda from the select board? So, select board, can someone make a motion to amend the agenda to include that item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Cleo says aye as well.
And I heard Lucian. So that's all five. So we have, all right, so we have our agenda adjusted. So the next thing, which is the meat of the deal is our pre-town meeting updates. And I'm just, I want to say a couple of things just in the beginning before we get into this. I mean, first of all, thank you, everybody, for joining us on this Zoom platform. This, this is a first for us, obviously. So please bear with us if it's technologically a little bit challenging. We have had a request from some, it looks like everybody has their video off except the select board anyway, but if you keep it off unless you're speaking, that might help bandwidth issues for, for some participants. I want to be sure to say that in order to keep it orderly, it'd be great if you could use the raise your hand function or or put a message in the chat and Sean is going to be monitoring both those things. Also, I want to say, I want to say that this is an informational meeting. So this is not, we can't make any decisions on any of the things that have been warned. We can't, you know, modify any of the articles or anything like that, like we could if it were actually town meeting. So this is just informational to help people as they fill out their ballot that has been mailed in the mail to everyone and it, you know, comes, it's a little thing that's machine readable, so that we're going to be able to use our ballot reader and so. Okay, so we're accumulating questions already, but so questions about the ballot. So it looks like we have a couple of questions about the ballot already. So maybe we should hit those first. It looks like, oh, rise, you have a question about the ballot that you put in first.
Yes, and I missed the meeting this year. I love being moderator. So this is my chance to speak.
Yeah.
In looking over the officers that we are going to be electing on ballot, we have a first and second constable that is not on the ballot, or it's on the ballot, but the people that hold that office currently are not in the book on page three, at least I cannot find them. So I would just like to say that currently, the first constable is Arthur Case and the second constable is Erwin Belkris. The other office that's on the ballot is Feds Viewer, and again, I cannot find it. And currently, the listers are your Feds Viewers, because I know when people go into vote, they're going to need the books to know who to elect for all these offices that do not have names put to them. Oh, I just thought I put that out and maybe you could add that to your website, or if the reporter, is it Doug McClure that covers select board meetings too? Whoever the reporter is, that you could add that as a side that people for those two positions or three positions, first constable, second constable and Feds Viewer. So, and I thought the ballot came out very nice and clear. And I was really concerned on how that would look, but I think it's going to be okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Arise. I think we were all concerned about who's going to look and how this is going to go. And I think you're right. It's, it's yeah, considering the circumstances, it looks great.
Eric Paul Fix had a question on ballots as well.
Yeah. So Paul, do you want to go ahead with your question on the ballot?
I do. I just one comment on Arise's comment. If you look at the minutes of the previous last year's meetings, you know who was pointed to what in those positions. So the information.
That's where I found your name, Paul, but not everybody's going to read that.
I understand. Never, that never mind. That's not my business to get involved in anyway. So my question is, on the ballot, some positions that are currently filled have names next to them or names to be selected and others that are currently filled don't have names. And I'm wondering what criteria were used to determine who's named up with him and who's didn't.
Yeah, great question, Paul. I'm going to ask Alberta if you could speak to that. I see that you're here and.
So what we did was we said that if you wanted your name to be on the ballot this year, you need to have a consent form filled out and delivered to the town clerk's office before the date when petitions were due. And that was how you got put on. A lot of these offices that you're seeing names that don't have anybody is because those people don't actually run for it. We just pick them at town meeting, throw their name in a hat and have them voted on. So they don't actually have any real interest in participating. They just get their name thrown in to that segment of the meeting and they get elected. So the ones that were interested in running for an office filled out the consent forms and had them submitted to us and we took care of getting them on the ballot.
So how was that, was that information delivered only to people who currently held positions? Or was the public made aware of that somehow?
We discussed that at several meetings, Paul. I put something on Front Porch Forum twice. I think the Gazette covered it. It was made aware to everyone that if you wanted your name on the ballot for anything, you needed to check with the offices that were available and do a consent form.
Gotcha. Yeah, I guess at that point, we didn't even know whether this, the town meeting would be in person or remote. So I guess it wasn't clear to.
That's not, that's actually not true. The select board had decided that the beginning of, end of December, beginning of January, that we were going to go by Australian ballot. So we pushed that forward throughout the whole thing. The board made that decision early on.
I guess, I guess I missed that and others did too. So thank you. My error. I appreciate it.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's been a crazy ride this whole year and there's been a lot to keep track of and I thank Alberta for getting, getting us where we are with this ballot because it's pretty good. It's not perfect, but it's going to get us through. So. Okay. So I am going to go back to our previously scheduled programming, which was to walk through our articles, sort of. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, most, so all the articles really were voting on in the ballot and you can, everybody, all the registered voters, active registered voters were mailed ballots. You can return those by mail. You can drop them through the Dropbox at Albert, at the town clerk's office, or you can show up and vote in person at the fire station on town meeting day. So we're not deciding anything tonight. And I think that, so the purpose of this meeting really is to have the discussion that we would have at town meeting that would help inform your vote if possible. So the first couple are, the first article is to elect a moderator, which I don't, I don't know that we would have any discussion on that at this point in this meeting. Unless someone raises their hand. Article two is to accept the town report from last year. Again, I don't know that, that there's really a lot of discussion for that. And article three is shall the town have its current taxes collected by the town treasurer? And article four is electing the town officers, which are all, we've actually just talked about a little bit about the officers that are, that are on the ballot. Article five is one that we could have some discussion about. Article five is shall the town vote a budget of $3,525,629 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town and authorize the select board to set a new tax rate sufficient to provide the same. So this is an opportunity where we could, the select board can talk about how we arrived at this year's budget and and take any questions from anyone. And if I don't know, Casey, do you have the budget where you could put it up on the screen? It's also where is it? What pages are, ah, there we go. So. Sorry, say again.
I do have it. Yep.
Nice. Thank you. So as you can see, the, but so the select board tried to be fairly, well, we tried very hard to be, to keep the increase down in the budget and we, the increase in the budget is $60,509 over last year, which is a 1.5% increase. Unfortunately, we're also projecting a decrease in revenues. And this is largely driven, I think, by a decrease in some of the police related revenues, like the the Greensboro contract and yikes, SIU grant, maybe? And there are a few others that are down a little bit. So even though we, we kept no cops, right? The cops grant. Thank you. Because the, the cops grant was for three or did it end up being metered out over four years? In any case, we're in the final year of, of the cops grant. So so that goes away for the budget we're looking at. We don't have that revenue. And so the net result is that our projected revenues are down a little bit. We tried to keep our budget increase very small, but still the net result of that is that we're going to need to raise almost 4% needs to be the increase in amount raised through property taxes. And I'm just gonna take my cue from O-Rise's question, which is why are Greensboro revenues projected to be down? And the reason is that the current Greensboro police contract was actually was actually based on some hard number. It was a three-year contract. It was based on kind of a static number from three years ago with built-in increases over the years. And it actually ended up generating increases in the payments Greensboro was making to Hardwick that went above and beyond what was what was traditionally had been the split. So traditionally, we tried to design contracts with Greensboro such that Greensboro picked up about 24% of the cost of running the police department. And that 24%, I believe, is based on the rough percentage of the total population of the Greensboro Hardwick area, if you take into account the summer population in Greensboro for those months. So traditionally, we tried to base contracts on that 24%. The current contract, for some reason that I actually either didn't know or don't remember, was based on some hard numbers and not a percentage. And it had an incrementer such that what Greensboro is paying this current year is actually quite a bit more than 24%. And so the, the number we put in the budget would be assuming kind of adjusting that back down to 24%. I will note that we do not, the current contract is set to expire June 30th with Greensboro and we're still working with them to get a new contract. Sorry. So that's that. Can we? So that's pretty high level. Can we scroll down to? People like to look at the, okay, yeah, that's great. Thank you. So just the budget summaries. You can see that some departments or some of the, the sub budgets are up a little and some of them are down a little. So, oh, if you're not speaking, if you put yourself on mute, that'd be great. And so the, the net result of all that nets out to the 60,000, 507. And if you, so if you, sorry, then that's the increase in the budget that we're projecting. If, Casey, could you scroll down to the, or show us the tax rate slide? I know that this is one that people like to see because it gives a, an idea about what this might actually do to your taxes. But I always like to remind folks that a lot of this is based on projections and conjecture. So this is, you know, taking in, this is kind of with a guess at what the grand list is going to be like and it's not really, this is not set in stone, but it can help give an idea. So I think the most fair comparison is the bottom right one, which is assuming that all appropriations pass because they all passed last year. So that's the most fair comparison year to year. So if that happened, if the budget passes and the, all the appropriations pass, that would be a roughly 3.16% increase in property tax would be needed to meet that. And that on what that would do on a hundred thousand dollar home is it would be an increase of $40.95 for every hundred dollars of value is our proposal. In the past, I've gone through the budget in a fair amount of detail. And I've been told that I don't need to do that because everyone can read and you all get the town report. So what I'd rather do is flip it over to any questions that people have. If people could either raise hands, use the virtual raise hand thing, or put a comment in the chat, that would be great.
Eric, where is the virtual raise hand thing? I don't see it on my, is it at the bottom? Is it, I don't see it.
It's a great question.
Casey will have to unshare her screen.
It's at the bottom where you see the little thing that says reactions. If you click on that, you see an opportunity to raise hand.
It's not available on all platforms or all versions of all platforms, just for the record.
So.
Just throw it out there if you have, and I'll keep it on the chat room.
So that, yeah, if you can use the raise hand, or if you want to put something in the chat, or if you can't do either of those, I guess call out, there aren't that many of us. Excellent. Oh, Rise has a question. Go ahead, Oh, Rise.
Erica, I'm just curious as to, and I'm not sure of the verbiage to ask this, but what is, how is our appraisal compared to being at 100%?
Oh, the, the CLA, the common level appraisal?
Yes, common level of appraisal. That's what I wanted.
Yeah. Yeah. So I know that it's CLA and I don't remember the number. I think we're, we're in the high 90% but I don't remember. Alberta, do you know?
The last time, Eric, that I got a sheet from the state, I think we were at 94.1% or something.
Yeah, sounds, sounds right. So, and was it 2016 when we had our last townwide reappraisal?
Yes, that's correct. 2016.
And when, so often the townwide reappraisals happen about every 10 years, usually immediately after the townwide reappraisal, we're at or very near 100% for the common level of appraisal. And that's what the state uses to determine what our share of school taxes will be for the school unions we're in. So typically, it's 100% right after a townwide reappraisal and then often it drifts down over the years. So, and I believe we're mandated to do another reappraisal if we get below, I can't remember, is it 90 or 80%? I can't remember what it is.
80.
80?
It's when we get close to 85%.
Okay.
They start telling us we need to start preparing for one. Yep.
Yep. So at 94%, we're still holding pretty close to, to 100%.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Others, other folks have questions about the budget?
I don't see any hands. I don't see anything else in the chat room.
All right. I guess I would like to say that I, I feel, you know, at the risk of speaking for the select board, I feel that we have crafted a budget that doesn't have any extraneous increases. It, it attempts to continue to provide the, the services that the town has historically provided. And yeah, I don't, you know, we have increases that are due to cost of living increases to salaries. We have changes in insurance costs. I think we had a bunch of those go down this year, but some go up and where we're at with our budget.
I have a question probably for Alberta. Did, did, did any of the appropriations that we voted on last year fall off? And then it looks like we have a couple of new ones. Could you kind of go over that? Just like.
So the only one that fell off was the Hardwick Community Restorative Justice Program. They moved their program back to St. Johnsbury. So that's no longer a Hardwick program. So they're off our list. Um, I don't think we took on anybody new this year. Crasberry Community Care Center last year was their first year, I think, getting on our list. So they're still relatively new, but they were on there last year.
I just don't remember the.
Oh, those are not asking for appropriation, Sherry. Those are actually, um, every five years, we have to vote whether or not to exempt certain properties from being responsible for property taxes. Um, and that in our five years is up. 2021 is the year that we had to do those again. So that's why they're on there. So it's specific to that. And then that translates to our local agreement costs on our tax rate each year. If we vote to exempt them, then we pay their portion of the school taxes through the local agreement. So that's what that is.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks. Wiz has her hand up.
Talking about the same area, Alberta, I remember five years ago when the Masons were, Masonic Lodge was asking for tax exemption. And the discussion at town meeting around it pointed out that they have head start in their building, which is a, I don't know, but, but that, that made it a public, a public sort of entity instead of a private men's club, which is what it is other. Is that still the case or have they just become this looking for tax exemption?
Um, so you are correct, Wiz. They do have Hardwick Head Start, still using their facility. Unfortunately, they still qualify to be listed for this. It would be a question for the voters whether or not they felt that they really should be tax exempted when they have a, a source of funding coming into their building at all times. But they, but they do still qualify under this, under this exemption to be put on the ballot to be voted on.
Thank you.
I don't suppose we have a Freemason here to talk about whether or not they need the head start to support their organization or?
So I'm going to pull us back in for just a second and just give one last chance to ask any questions on the budget. If anybody had any budget questions, and it didn't look like we did have them, but all right. So hearing none. We do have the appropriations and, and on our agenda, it says that we have a place for agencies requesting appropriations to speak about their organization and their request. And I know that we have Bobby Nisbet here to represent the Greensboro Nursing Home and she has to jump and go to another meeting. So I'd like to recognize her first. Uh, yeah, she was here. Did I? Oh, there you are. Great.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. I understand you wanted someone to come in to be available in case there were any questions about this appropriation that we're asking for. So I'm here to do that, but I can give you a little history of Greensboro and what we're doing right now and what we might be using the money for with COVID. It's really been pretty interesting this year. First of all, we've had no residents with COVID, no staff with COVID. Everybody is fully vaccinated. All the residents are fully vaccinated and all staff who wanted to be vaccinated are. We don't have any in-house visitations at this point, but are looking forward to that. They're ready for it whenever the governor says that can happen. It's been really, really hard on the residents and the families to not be able to be in with their family member. But the staff has done an amazing job to keep them active and engaged and connected with their families. and um connected with their families through um technology such as we have now. So that's, that's the good thing that's happening there. Um, as far as our what we might use the appropriation for, normally we would use it to support programs to support our residents. This year with COVID, the amount of money needed to supply personal protective equipment for the staff has just skyrocketed. We've had cer- certain help through other organizations and through the government programs, but just as an example, um, uh, masks and ninety-five masks that were not used before, they may have a box in the basement that was collecting dust. Now with COVID, they have a two-month supply in the basement because they just don't know when they will get another shipment if they run low, so they're keeping it um a good supply on hand. And the amount where a box would cost ten dollars for masks at the beginning, say a year ago, now they're up to thirty dollars a box. And we come from ver, they have eight different types. Masks, some that can be um used again, some that can be sanitized at the hospital, some that can't, so each one is different, so they don't know how long each mask is usable for. So our money that you, the town of Hardwick, would give us would help to keep the staff safe and the residents safe with the um proper protective equipment that they need. As things are getting better, and they are, we are looking forward to moving forward with our walking path at the nursing home. We have contracted with a group out of Montpelier to come in and assess the, the grounds for a um two-part walking path. One, if you're familiar with the grounds at all, uh, we have a pond, Maggie's Pond, and one of the walking paths would go up to the pond and around it and back. The other walking path would um be an open area that would come from the main road over across the main uh back part of the nursing home and would connect with the upper Maggie's Pond Trail. Um, so we're, we're in the process now, we're waiting for our Act Two Fifty permit, and then we'll be good to go to get started. If, there's two phases, depending on what we have for support, and our first phase will be a walking path to Maggie's Pond. That will be open to the public, and we're hoping down the road to connect both of our trails to Greensboro Walking Trail that would allow people to walk in the village safely and would come down um towards the nursing home and would come on to the nursing home property and up around Maggie's Pond and back around. So working with the group in the town of Greensboro, there may be anywhere from a five to seven mile loop of safe walking um in the village of Greensboro connected to the nursing home. It would also allow walking for the residents, and we have residents that are in for rehab, and this would allow an outside space for walking for them as well. And we, our residents, about ten to fifteen percent, give or take, are from Hardwick. A lot of them are uh rehab, which we now have an inpatient rehab program, and because of COVID, we're unable to have an outpatient, but we're ready to go. As soon as we are given permission to allow uh plumbers and workmen to come in, we will be opening up an outpatient rehab center where people will be able to come in for daily rehab sessions. Right now, it's just for those that are in-house. So that's sort of been a synopsis of where we are. Um, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them for you.
Great, thanks, Bobby. Um, does anyone have any questions about the Greensboro Nursing Home appropriation?
Oh, sounds good.
Nice work, nice, nice work combating COVID.
Yeah, you guys are doing a great job.
I'm really proud of all of the staff and our administrator have, because I've not been in the nursing home, we can't go in. Because nobody's allowed in, so the staff and the administration there are just incredible, and they make it all happen.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Bobby.
You're welcome, and thanks for having me.
Yeah. All right, um I'm just gonna uh roll through the rest of these uh appropriations and ask if, if anyone has questions. So after the Greensboro Nursing Home, next is, there's an appropriation of thirty-five hundred for aware. Does anybody have any questions about aware for this appropriation? Any, anybody want to say a quick one-minute thing about aware? Does anybody hear from where?
Yes, I'm here from aware.
Oh, that'd be great. Do you want to just say, just a real quick?
Yes, thank you. I'm Anna Peary. I'm from the Aware Office. We're the Domestic and Sexual Violence Agency. Um, and we're, we're still going strong even with COVID, and as you can imagine, being a victim of domestic or sexual violence is difficult, and with COVID, it's um more than doubly difficult. Um, so the appropriations money that we get from Hardwick every year, and thank you very much, uh, we're a small organization and it helps out a lot. Um, we use it to support our programs as well as, you know, basically where it's needed. Um, and we have people coming to our door calling that need um, you know, maybe gas money. Uh, this is pre-COVID, obviously, but, you know, gas money to get to court, or even gas money now to get, get to work. Um, housing costs, moving costs, um, you know, crisis support, supplies, um, almost, almost anything that they're, you know, facing when there's been victimization. So the COVID has made it more difficult. Um, but we're hanging in there, and we've been helping some people who have, um, you know, if they have to quarantine because they've been exposed, then they have to miss work. Um, there's all kinds of scenarios. Uh, the courts are still um doing everything remotely, and that is a challenge, to say the least. Um, so we're hoping that things will open up um in a bit, but we're still here, and uh we really appreciate the support we get from Hardwick.
Great, thank you. Thanks for the synopsis. That's awesome to hear that you guys are still going strong.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions about aware or? All right, thanks, Anna. We're gonna move on.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Article Eight, um, shall the town appropriate some of money not to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars for the support of the Lemoyle Family Center? Um, do we have any questions about the Lemoyle Family Center? Or? All right, hearing none. Next is uh Article Nine, shall the town appropriate some money not to exceed three thousand dollars for the support of the Hardwick Historical Society? Any questions about the Historical Society or comments?
Well, as the president of the Historical Society, I would just say that even though we haven't done much with the public, we've been busy inside with the collections, and we actually use the money as part of our operating expenses. It's, it's so, it's baseline for us.
Great, thanks, Wiz. Um. I'm looking, uh, Sean, I'm relying on you to catch me if somebody is uh wanting to speak and I go past.
Okay, okay, I'm scrolling back. I got two screens running here, so I'm scrolling. I don't see any hands raised, and I'm keeping on the chat box, Eric, so keep moving.
Great, so next is um Article Ten, shall the town appropriate some money not to exceed three thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars for the support of Northeast Kingdom Human Services? Is anybody, uh, and we have Ruth Marquette, who would like a, a very short synopsis would be great.
As we uh provided a summary for your town report.
Yep.
We have really worked well with um during this year with COVID to trans, transfer a lot of our um services to telehealth now, uh, when possible, so that's been a really big thing and, and also extra expense for all the computerized stuff that you have to go along with that, and our um personal protective device um equipment that is needed for people that have to do um in-person visits and things. So uh we are still out there serving the community members, and we are here for you. If, if you, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions about uh Northeast Kingdom uh Human Services? All right.
Any questions, Eric?
Good, I'm gonna move on. Um, next is Article Eleven, shall the town appropriate some money not to exceed two thousand five hundred dollars for the support of Hardwick Area Food Pantry?
All right, I can represent the um food pantry. Um, we are just uh appreciating the support and um wanted to update everyone that um operations continued and are obviously much needed. Um, in the past year, there's been a thirty percent increase um in visits, and um, some of the adjustments have also included um getting some volunteers to take delivery out to folks who um request delivery, and we've also um expanded to support the sites in Craftsbury and Albany. So that's the big change, uh, recent change for the, for the food pantry operations. Those sites, uh, which kind of founded out of their neighbor, neighbor-to-neighbor networks and localized initiatives um are still operating in sort of the same independent capacity that they have been, but with, with the Hardwick Area Food Pantry's support and um kind of operational umbrella. So that's, that's the big change, but we've seen a lot of generosity from the town this past year, and from folks donating either food or um hats or masks or uh making monetary donations, so we really appreciate it.
Great, great. Thank, thanks, Jake. Any, any questions about the um appropriation for the food pantry?
Um, I actually had a question or a comment. Um, I'm here from North Country Animal League, and um I just realized we hadn't been in touch with the Hardwick Food Pantry because we've been working through Lemoyle County Food Share, and um if uh you guys are interested to uh connect with us to offer free pet food through the food pantry, um, you know, I would love to connect, um, and if I could maybe get the contact information um through um stuff, maybe through the chat box, we could talk about it later.
Could you state your name, please?
Luciana.
You have a last name, Luciana?
Masuror. It's a hard one to remember.
Jake, go ahead and message her directly now, if you would.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, great. Any other questions about the food pantry appropriation? All right, next is um, shall the, uh, Article Twelve, shall the town appropriate some money not to exceed two thousand six hundred dollars for the support of Caledonia Home Health and Hospice? Anybody have any questions about Caledonia Home Health and Hospice? I think the name kind of says it all.
Hi, this is Lori Belizzi from Caledonia Home Healthcare and Hospice, so I'm more than willing to take any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Hey. I hear crickets. Thank you, Lori, for coming, and I'm gonna move on.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Article Thirteen, shall the town appropriate some money not to exceed three thousand dollars for the support of Hardwick Community Television, who has been uh filming um, or, or filming is maybe the wrong word, but filming the Hardwick uh Select Board meetings for years and also continuing to push them up, the recorded Zoom sessions, and um.
That's not, it hasn't been that easy a task, so uh this is Sean Fielder. Thank you to Leaf and the crew. It's been, all of us have had pretty significant things we've had to adjust on, and Leaf, thank you very much. It's been helpful to keep information going to our community.
Definitely. Uh, we appreciate the support of uh the Hardwick community, for sure. Um, you know, we want to bring everybody, not really news so much, but just uh what's happening in our community in a, in an unedited way, if possible, and if anybody ever wants to contribute to that, they should get in touch, because this is a TV station that can work two ways. It can be a commu- community um produced TV station, and if you have ideas, it's, it's a good way to get stuff that you're thinking about back out into the community. So we appreciate the, the support of the town, though. Do you have any other questions? Don't hesitate.
Great, thanks, Leaf. It's like, uh, I think if HCTV is our own little C-SPAN.
Right.
Um, plus, plus other programming.
Yeah, we're doing live basketball as we speak.
Yay.
Yep, people like it.
Um, all right. Next appropriation, uh, next, yeah, next on the list is um Article Fourteen, uh, which is, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed three thousand four hundred dollars for the supportive rural community transportation, RCT? You may see their vans around. Have any questions or comments about rural community transportation? Or the appropriation to them? All right, hearing none, and move on to Article Fifteen, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed three thousand five hundred dollars for the support of Northeast Kingdom Arts Council? This is also known as um Neck Arts and is the force behind the um townhouse.
I'm here to answer any questions anybody has. I mean, otherwise, we, it's in the book and all of our information is there.
Yeah. Great. All right, so um I'm seeing any questions. So next, after uh Neck Arts is Article Sixteen, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed four thousand five hundred dollars for the support of the Northeast Kingdom Council on Aging?
We have Mary Ellen Reese here, Eric, to represent.
So if we have any questions, Mary Ellen Reese is here, representing um NEK Council on Aging.
Thank you very much for the Town of Hardwick's support for the Northeast Kingdom Council on Aging.
Great. All right, and thanks, Mary Ellen.
Not seeing any questions, Eric.
Thanks, Mary Ellen, for coming.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Um, next is uh Article Seventeen, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed two thousand one hundred dollars for the support of North Country Animal League? And we did have, I lost her now.
Um, hi, I'm here.
There you are. This is it.
Thanks so much for giving us this opportunity. I know in the past, uh, Hardwick has given us uh uh the, supported us at the twenty-one hundred level, and things have been different this year for everyone. Our income through programs and adoption services has been in, uh, impacted significantly, but we've had to remain open as an essential business. Um, you know, uh, our intakes uh by town vary greatly year to year, but um between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, throughout the pandemic, we've taken in about ten stray animals from Hardwick, and eleven Hardwick residents who could no longer care for their pets surrendered them to us. And um our average length of stay, uh, stray, stay for dogs have actually gone up to twenty days and cats to twenty-one uh days, and uh this has actually increased our average expense per animal to over seven hundred dollars. And um fifteen Hardwick residents have adopted a dog or a cat from us um this year, which only accounts for about forty-six percent of each animal's expense. We're also continuing to provide services through humane education programs, and um, Ncal Meals has been an important resource. Um, we've uh distributed over four thousand pounds of uh pet food and would love to connect with the Hardwick. Pet Food Pantry as well. So, uh, you know, there's just a lot more coming and we would love to continue to be a resource for our community. And if there's any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I have my email address in the chat box.
Great, thank you, Luciana.
Thank you.
The, uh, the Animal Control Officer in Hardwick is regularly working with that group and we appreciate their help on these issues she's mentioned.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Right, next is Article 18, is Town of Hardwick, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed $1,500 for the support of the Craftsbury Community Care Center, sometimes known as the Forests? Any questions or comments about the care center?
Anything, Eric?
Article 19, shall the town exempt the, oh, sorry, we're done with the appropriations. So I know that Alberta already covered these, but just in case folks have any questions, Articles 19, 20, 21 and 22 are all about exempting properties from taxation for the next five years. And as Alberta's already described it, but does anybody have any questions about those? All right, hearing none, the last couple articles on the agenda, on the warning are the ones about they usually, oh, rise reads and comments. She says they're her favorites, but they're the ones authorizing the select board to enter into contracts to fix the amount of money that's paid as annual municipal tax. So basically entering into tax stabilization contracts. Any questions on those? Anything else that's on our warning? One thing that came up in the chat is Paul Fix said that he's available to answer if any, answer questions, if anybody has them about the Communication Union District or
I do see a hand, yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I see a hand up on the label is just iPhone. Not sure who it is.
Uh, this is Mark McCandro. And I've been asked to substitute for Kathy Hemmings to represent the Craftsbury Community Care Center. And I know it backtracked a bit, but just wanted to thank you for putting us on the list last year. And I guess it's appropriate to give a quick update. We weren't quite as lucky as, as Greensboro. We did get hit by the pandemic. And we had, we did lose two, two residents in, in this winter. We had a massive response from the state, the community, the staff. And they did an outstanding job and we have not had a new case since, or anyone test positive on the staff or the residents since the beginning of January. So we're kind of out in the clear, but I know there was some concern about that and I thought people may have questions. But there was a tremendous response from the state, the Kim Roberts and her, the director and her staff did an outstanding job. And yet that does put us in an awkward situation. We normally have 24 rooms and we have a waiting list, but we are at 18 occupants now. And we've always had a policy for a portion of that to be low income. So that's some revenue that we'll be suffering this through this year. And for, we could certainly appreciate the help from the Town of Hardwick to mitigate that. I'm happy to answer any questions if any folks do have it.
Thanks for that update. I'm not seeing any questions, but thanks and thanks for, thanks to all the staff at the Forests. It's a great resource for our area.
Thank you.
I think unless people have questions about things on the, the warning, we may be ready to move to Sherry's item that we added at the end. So please stop me if you want to talk about anything on the, on the morning. But with Sherry had suggested, I think you can speak, but I think the synopsis is we should make an effort this year, especially to try to get the word out that the select board appoints a whole bunch of physicians, town physicians, um, and like right after town meeting and it would be great to let people know what those are and let them, let us know if they'd like to serve in those roles, right?
Yeah, so maybe I don't know, you know, we usually, at that organizational meeting, we have a list of all the people that have been in the position and and Sean usually has to do some work to figure out, find out from them whether they're willing to continue or whether we have to find someone. So maybe, um, maybe we can just create some sort of synopsis and get it out before that meeting, just to potentially give some people opportunities to, to participate in those things, you know?
And those, those things are quite varied, right? It's everything from like, I think it's
Well, like there's appointments to, like there's an appointment of a select board member to the board of the townhouse because it's part of our bylaws that a select board member participate in that board. So of course that's not just anybody, it has to be one of us. And then like I'm serve as the representative for the solid waste district, but then there are also the town health officer and there's other positions that, you know, like what's Larry has been for
Town Service Officer.
The Town Service Officer. There's quite a few things that it's possible that people might be interested if they were aware that there were that there was a potential need, you know?
And while we do have folks who've served for a long time and done a great job in those roles, we also have some, some positions, some years where we're struggling to fill the appointment. So it'd be great to
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, and you know, everything changes with this whole pandemic day. I mean, we've discovered that it's really helpful if you're able to get online or if you have some other special skills that you can offer, you know, it's kind of a good thing.
So maybe that's something we could put up. That list could go up on the website, at least the town website.
Yeah, then we could just invite people to check it out, maybe.
Hey. I mean, I think that's a pretty that would be a reasonable step, I think.
Yeah, I'll cross check what we had for last year's and we'll see what we can try to get up in this next couple of business days in.
Well, no, I mean, it, it doesn't happen until that organizational meeting. So we've got a, at least a couple of weeks, right? Am I wrong?
No, March 4.
Oh, well, what we try to do is get the assignments done, but with it's, it's a little tricky this year with just how things are going with the meeting planning. So it may be that we have a slight delay on getting some of the assignments in place, but what I can do for a next step is, sorry, this is Sean, what I can do for a next step is, uh, we'll, we'll look at, we'll obviously get that data table in order and start to figure out. Yeah, Sherry, you're correct. I mean, we gotta get our select board assignments in place for some of these things. So there's certain positions. We can't get too far ahead.
Right.
Some of these, yeah, as an example, I'm a town health officer. Well, that, that's taken care of. You know, we just verify our deputy health officer. We verify our current town health officers. You know, we gotta just cross check some appointments. So some things are taken care of by design, but other things, we've got to just make sure the appointments are filled.
And if we could, yeah, we could put up a list of, of everything that we, we appoint. That's not, I mean, probably putting up the ones that have to be a select board member. It's not super relevant, but if we put up a list of all the others, just so folks know that those are appointments that the board makes.
It's a, it's a great way to kind of get your feet wet and, and find out what's going on, you know? I mean,
Yeah.
You know, I, I was also going to mention, just as an aside, I, I was on Facebook and Instagram and stuff that the library trustees, the two library trustees that are on the ballot that there's no name for. They posted, Judy Vine posted on their Facebook page and stuff that both Jody Lu Smith and Elizabeth Rosano are, are interested in continuing as a trustee. So they could be filled in into those three-year terms.
Consider that when you're voting.
Yeah, when you're voting. If you don't know who else to vote for, or yeah, that's a possibility.
Paul has a question on the topic, I think.
Paul? Paul, do you have a question on?
Yeah, I, I do. So some of these are appointments that aren't auto, you know, required for you folks on the select board to be. Do you anticipate notifying incumbents that your meeting will be coming up and that if you're requiring, you know, written statements? So that will happen automatically or?
Not, not automatically, but we, we rely heavily on the town manager to reach out to those people beforehand.
Yeah, it's just a rough time to
It's a rough time. So like Sean said, it may not be that meeting the next Thursday, it may be the one after, depending on how things roll. But yeah, so for example, you're probably thinking you serve as our representative to the CUD, the Communication Union District and we, yeah, you would hear from Sean prior to us making appointments.
And he would be hoping that you would want to continue.
I'll, I'll, I'll take the platform here and just say, I think I'm looking back at last year's organizational meeting and I think what we would be, uh, what we'll have to make some assignments on would be our Central Mont Solid Waste Management District. We have a representative and alternative representative, a town health officer, which we've just brought up now with Wiz completing her select board assignment. We will have to assign an agent to convey real estate. That generally is a select board member.
It doesn't have to be, I think.
Yeah, good. Thank you for clarifying. Uh, there's, there's, I'll just read down the list.
Sean, I'm going to continue in that role if you'll have me.
Okay, so that's good to know that.
Excellent.
The other assignments, I'll just read down the list here now. N K Arts Board Rep, Sherry has served on that role. I would assume she'd be interested in continuing in that moving forward.
Yeah, unless somebody else wants to be on the board too.
We have Eric Remick in the Hardwick Trails Committee as the Hardwick Trails Committee Rep. Eric, you can, you don't have to answer now on any of these. Eric's also on.
I'm in for that.
Okay, Lamo Valley Rail Trail Committee Rep for Eric as well. The Town Recreation Committee, I have some updates on that. So we can, I can cross check on that information. And then we have Town Representative for Northeast Vermont Development Authority. That's our Regional Planning Commission. Sherry's currently in that role. Sherry, would you be interested?
Is really wanting to do that, they, it would certainly be okay.
Okay, so the other one we've got here is previous select word member Danny Hale was on the Hardwick Woodbury Rail Trail as a rep there. I can just check with him on that assignment and I've already talked about the health officer assignment. So I can check. That's the I skipped a couple at the top, forgive me, Civil Defense Emergency Management Coordinator generally has been the police chief. So we're anticipating Chief Cocken would continue in that role. We have Dean Mercer as our Animal Control Officer. I would anticipate him continuing in that role. So we've got just a couple of things that we would need to address. So I, I think we're, we'll be okay. We'll be able to get them in order, if not at the organizational meeting shortly following here. So I can put this list up.
Great, that, that's awesome. And I think that was mostly Sherry's intent, right? To try to publicize this.
Yeah, also so that people know who those people, who, who those people are too, if they want to contact the health officer, for instance.
Oh, right.
You know, or if they want to contact the, you know, Paul for the
Yeah.
I won't say that the C U D thing, yeah.
Great.
Okay, so we'll get some information up for sure and we'll get it addressed as we go into organizational meeting and following.
Awesome. So I see on the chat that Paul has an additional question.
Sorry, I just lost my screen trying to move around to other places. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So thank you, Sherry, for not calling us the CUD. We, we really like to be Northeast Kingdom Community Broadband or a C U D. But my question comes because I am on that board, but I know other people who are appointed probably have questions too. There was a time when the select board, when positions were coming up, whether there was an incumbent or not, would post an ad in the Hardwick Gazette indicating they were accepting letters of interest. Is that still something that will happen? Again, I ask only because this conversation seems to be about those same things and that has not been mentioned.
Yeah, so we certainly do post ads for, for some appointments. I I'm having a
Isn't it more for like Planning Commission and Electric Commission? Those are the ones that we ask for the letters of interest, but
Were asked for the Communications Union District as well.
Right.
Yeah, when it was new, yep.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
So we could, I mean, we, we certainly could.
It's a mixed tactic is what I was going to add, Eric. I mean, it, it, we will maybe sometimes put it up on front porch forums. Sometimes we would have it on the website. It, it kind of just depends as how I would frame it, if you will.
For these.
Yeah, and just if we have, I mean, we've got our current assignments. If there happens to be a vacancy mid-year, then we would, you know, get the word out, of course.
So thinking of that, Sean, when we put this, put the other appointments up, we should put up like the vacancy in the Planning Commission.
Those are up now.
Oh, they are. They, they continue to be up.
Well, uh, let me just point this out now. We do have a one-stop shop on the town's website where if you, if folks go to our homepage, what you can do now is you can go to a complete listing of our board assignments under the government tab and then go down to committees and boards. There's an all board assignment and you can check on, uh, you know, things like planning commission, things like DRB, who, who the current assignments are, if we have vacancies. So you can cross check it there. It's not, I have to admit, we had a recent change on the Equity Committee. I don't think I've made that tweak as of yet, but we're trying our best to keep it live.
So it's pretty darn current and so Lucian's had his hand up for a while.
Sorry, Lucian.
That's good. Um, so I was thinking that, um, I wonder if you could put the stuff up on the, could you leave to put it up on the television too?
Oh, if we could get it to Leaf and he could put it up on television?
Yeah, I don't know. Sometimes he has like little, little snippets between segments, I think.
Good idea.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that, that list from last year about our assignments, I mean, you want to add the Equity Committee Select Board Representative on Equity Committee for that. It's a new, a new one for this year.
Good. Sean, you're taking a note on that?
Yeah, I have it. Thank you, Lucian, for the reminder.
So fine, I'm thinking it's dinner time. Does anybody have anything before we close? All right, so I really appreciate all of, I know that some people have had to drop off, but I really appreciate everyone who came out tonight and joined this. It's sad that we're not going to have a live town meeting. But, um, but this is the, this is by far the biggest attendance I can remember at a pre-town meeting. So
Eric, could I offer a comment?
Yeah.
I want to say thank you to Wiz and to Lucian. They're going to be completing their select board assignments. And they've done some really good community service for Hardwick and that impacts a lot of people positively. Uh, so I appreciate it. Thank you. And they've done some really good community service for Hardwick and that impacts a lot of people positively. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, the select board.
More for me than I've done for it. I'm, I'm, I'm going to miss you guys. On the other hand, I'm not going to disappear.
Good, don't disappear. That, that sounds very permanent. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, I'll be around too.
Good, Lucian. All right. Okay. On that note of thanks, and I call, I'm gonna adjourn our special meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending and have a great rest of the week.
Okay.
Good, everyone.
Okay.